We have no minutes because we just started. Thank you, Counselor Winnie, for agreeing to take minutes for meetings. The first thing we need to do, I don't have the mayor here for public speak, okay? So let's get on to the agenda. Counselor McCoy, President McCoy asked that we consider having, it was you who wrote
All right.
Yeah, I saw it, I read it, even though I didn't bring it with me, I'm pretty sure it said you. You asked that all agendas be electronically distributed.
I requested the topic be discussed.
Okay. So, we want to start us off, and then I'm going to ask Barbara to tell us what she thinks.
Yeah, I mean, this was initiated certainly by Counselor Hayes, was more of the impetus that I thought it was a legitimate request that we could look at. So, that is, I've gone back and forth on the practicality for me, because I believe in North Hampton, the city bought all the counselors' laptops or something, so they have, I have an iPad and I have a desktop, I don't have a laptop. And also, from my perspective, and maybe it's just technological level, you know, you go to different subcommittee meetings, it seems very, more practical for me to be able to go under finance or appointments and pull out those, and then if I'm running a meeting and you have a public hearing, so public safety or ordinance, you know, I'm, I don't think I personally am ready for it, but I just want to vote, but anyway, that, that was my perspective.
Counselor Hayes?
I don't, we're not the, we're not the only end user. I think this is more about public information and making sure that all of this is available to the public.
It is, but currently, they would have to come to the clerk's office to get it.
Correct.
Okay, and then you were thinking, well, the website right now, as I understand, it is supposed to print agendas or publish agendas, am I correct on that?
It does. The PDFs are available.
All right, so, what would it entail? We had to pack it, because the request was for the whole packet.
The whole packet.
That would require you to scan and create PDFs of every document.
Okay, so, I, I was not, I was thinking, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, except on oversized things or very large documents, I could just, as long as I don't have paper clips or staples in them, I'd just put them in and scan them, and then I would email them.
Our printer or printer, or copier does scanning too, okay?
Yes.
So it's not like we need new equipment.
So, and then I would just take that document and email it to you. Now, I had not intended to, this was not, this was to be just to the counselors, just as the way you distribute your agenda.
Well, the packets only go to the counselors.
Right. Right. The agenda would still be on the website, and I would make, you know, some paper copies to put down here and have on the table, but as far as other things, I wouldn't be like photocopying and giving you a paper packet, I would just be sending it to you electronically. So, so that's fine, and I don't mind, it's...
Yeah, I didn't think it was more work if you were copying or scanning, you have to copy every paper anyway.
Right. I mean, what I do now is when something comes in, I copy it and I put it on, you know, put it in a pile, and then, I don't wait until the last minute and copy everything, I do them as they come in, and then it's just a matter of putting it together, sticking it in the books.
And that's one of the aspects I felt was great, was that we would be able to get information that's in our packet as it comes in, you know, rather than...
No, I would, I would still, I'd wait, because it would just be one big document. I, there's no way I could keep up with, did I scan that? No, it would, it would all come as here is your agenda packets.
On Thursday, you would get it, as if you were getting it in the mail. I think that's fair.
Yeah, no, it'd be, it'd be too...
If we were to do it.
Too tricky to do.
For me, the CPA, Jamie Webb, just sent us all the documents we need. She does electronically deliver them, but then I print them, because it's easier for me to bring them with me. I suppose if I brought my laptop, I could do that, and I'm intrigued by the fact that maybe we can get laptops for all the counselors, but that's never going to happen. If, if you have a laptop at your desk, then you're not wasting the paper to print them, which is another reason to do it, but I, I can do that, but we can't rely on that every counselor can do that, nor can we, I don't think we could demand that they print their own copies, can we? I don't know. If we send them electronically, and they want to have a copy at their desk, and they don't have a laptop, like you, Joe, you'd have to print it, correct?
I'd have to print it, and also kind of, again, maybe it's a technology age thing, you know, as I said, if I'm doing public hearings or whatever, you know, for me, it's just like, okay, finance, done, okay.
You're taking notes.
Yeah, or just, you know, in order of progression, so I would, I mean, I would have to print it out, which again, is then...
Do we feel this is an either/or, like, I mean, can't we just...
Well, that's, that's...
Can't we send it electronically in addition to what you've been doing historically?
Yeah, I mean, that's just adding one more job for me on top of what's probably going to start to be a lot more electronic, like, stuff, and, I mean, this is only one part of my job. And I really, if you're going to go electronic, I think it should be all electronic, or if you're going to stay paper, I mean, I don't mind, I can send the agenda, that's no problem. If you, if you want me to start sending the agenda, that's okay, but all the other stuff, I'd really, for my sake of sanity, I'd rather have it be all paper or all, all electronic for the packet.
It makes sense, because otherwise you're doing double work.
It's, it's double work, it's double work. I mean, it just, it just is, I mean, I think...
I mean, in this day and age, you would think that the counselors would have a printer at home, like I would have printed everything. And then I could choose to print those documents that are relevant to what I need to worry about.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that, you know, people read the minutes before they vote on them, so they get in there, you know?
Well, you're supposed to get them on Thursday.
They've been there a week ahead of time.
They're in there right now, yeah, so...
I mean, the packet's there now, so they have a weekend.
Right, and we have keys, you can come in at any time, any day, any night, any weekend.
Well, you have a laptop, so what do you think of this?
I can go either way. You know, I really, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I mean, at work, we do 90% of what we do via email scans and things like that, but we still use a lot of paper. I mean, you know, there's a lot to be said for being able to take notes on things, and, you know, a lot of emails and stuff, I print out, I end up printing them out.
Because it's easier to do this.
I need to take notes and things like that, you know, if I, if I'm following up on something and I, you know, write, write, I like to write my thoughts down, you know, different things like that, because I'm a very visual person, and I just, I need to have things written in front of me, so...
I like having things filed electronically so that I can flag them. I mean, I had to go to Barbara today to get a copy of a memo that was sent a year and a half ago, where normally that would be filed right into, you know, things that have to do with...
Well, depends, what do you have for, like, for me, if I was a counselor, I have an iPad, and I have a desktop, and my desktop is Word, and I could make folders for each meeting, but on my iPad, I, I don't know how I would do that, if I was to want...
Everything's synced up, I can access everything from my phone.
Yeah, but not everybody's like that. I mean, I mean, to take it from like...
I mean, as a degree of electronic capability...
Right, but if I had that document electronically, I have access to information much faster, and I can go back and look at my, like, they're not my paper notes, they're right there, the entire, everything that has to do with street protocol is there, and everything that has to do with, you know, that, that no parking sign that we're looking at is right there. A lot of it I do file, because we get emails that have the attachments, so those get filed for me, but it gives me access to documents off hours, you know, that I don't have to do.
What do you use for your, do you have, what do you have for, besides your phone?
She has a, she has synced it to, what do you have, a Mac?
Would you like them in order? I have the iPhone, the iPad, and I have my computer.
Well, I mean, if you were to get, because I was like thinking, okay, well, everybody could take, and you could have a folder for each meeting's agenda, and then you can look on there, and you can see when something's referred to, but then, like, what if you don't know what meeting it was at? Like, how do you know, I mean, how do you, how do you, it's not like, I mean, on my desktop...
What she's saying is if you, if you sent, if you sent all the documents, there'll be PDF.
Right.
It won't be, you know, editable documents. She could take those PDFs and file them under, okay, public safety, that's right there, and then, depending on how she, well, that's up to her, she would file them in such a way that she could access them a year later, because obviously, like I do, I file everything at home, that, well, when I type up minutes and something, it's this finance, then the date, I mean, at least I can access that, and it's helpful to a certain degree. So it wouldn't be your job to do that.
No, 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 I'm just thinking, if, like, if you have to think about, well, how people have their computers, and how...
And I use Google Docs, so I just file everything into Docs. You know, I have the city, city side where everything is filed into Google Docs from the city side.
So you got agendas, would you file them by meeting?
I would probably file them by committee.
I would, my, if the...
You know, like, if it was a public, if, now, like, when you send me the minutes...
You have a council agendas.
You sent me the, the agenda?
Right.
That's already been put into Rules and Government Relations into a folder.
I would, I would file them by the date.
For the agenda, and then when I do my notes, I'll put it in there.
You'd have to take, you'd have to copy and paste into, or, you know, you'd have to take out the documents.
You can do that, or you can just share it.
Right, so if you open up a PDF and you don't show thumbnails, you can just pull off the ones you want, except for...
Because if you have, if you have Adobe documents.
Uh, no, you know, it would be fine.
I'm intrigued by the notion of filing and the notion of electronic documents, but I agree with her, she's either going to do them all electronically or not, but that lends us to the point of, what are the counselors capable of doing right now? Do they like to print? Would they print? I would print out, because I agree, I need to write notes on things. I don't mind doing that, because then I could be selective of what I would print. That's a good thing. And then I could put the entire council stuff in there, and when I did, like, the other day, I told Barbara, Barbara, I completely lost one thing on finance, she had to give them a paper, she found it immediately, but I would be able to go in and find it, so I'm intrigued by that. On the other hand, I don't think we can force counselors to, what would happen is if the counselor says, well, I can't print them, can Barbara print them for me? Now she's doing double work, right? So I'd like to poll the counselors.
Yeah. If you're going to put the packet in one PDF...
Well, that would make sense.
Right?
Yeah, it would be one, yeah, through the copy machine, you know, one big PDF.
And it would make one PDF, so then it would also be one big PDF that you can go print, and it would spit out an entire packet, right?
Well, you can print pages one through four.
Right. But if you wanted the entire packet...
You can, but then...
It depends, sometimes the packets are little, and sometimes they're pretty big.
Absolutely.
You know?
But then you could choose what you want to print, so there's something to be said for that.
And I also want to say that if I did get something large, and it didn't come to me electronically, I mean, like the budget, or some other...
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes that's tough.
Or with over, like, so it would depend on how maybe I got some documents, but, and or if I got plans and they were big, and, I mean, there'd be just, so there, it would be, there would be instances where you'd still...
Let me ask another question, because access is an important thing. If you put this, if you did a PDF, would that go on the website, the entire PDF?
No, it would just be the agenda.
So you'd have to do a separate one for...
Well, which is, that's, you know, and that, that's all going to become, you know, the agendas.
Doggone it, anyway.
So, just, communities around us, city councils, how they do it, the folder for the agenda and the public, and the packet, which is available to the public and the press, so they can get a copy, a full copy of the packet, are put on folders on the website. So this is everything for this meeting, this is everything for that meeting, and it's like a Google Doc, it's a shared doc, anybody can open it and look at it, and that's part of the transparency that's coming through from the legislation, with the, you know, the legislation that's coming through with the...
Well, I don't, yeah.
You know, that we have to, you know...
Well, right now, like, right now, other records...
Why can't he put PDFs on the website?
We do put PDFs on the website.
No, no, so why can't he do the whole packet on the website?
I, I mean, I could, I can't, I mean, I'm not saying that you wouldn't, but, then would every board and committee be expected to do that?
That would be great.
Well, but who's going to do that?
Not everybody has technology to do it either, I hate to say it.
But, you know what?
And not everybody is technologically advanced to do it.
Right, but it is 2016, and this is a PDF.
It is 2016, Jen, but there's a lot of people that, that don't even still use email.
But there are a lot of people in this community that expect to be able to go online and get documents.
And then too, if, if this was to happen, I would think it should be something that comes up for every term, because you could end up with a Don Sekowski, you could end up with somebody who doesn't deal with any kind of technology, so...
Well, that's what I'm saying, Don Sekowski didn't have email.
And I'll go back to my first point, we are not the end user, this is for the public, and this is something that's an expectation that we all have.
I mean, I don't disagree with that, but we can't manufacture staffing time, we have to have the staffing time to do all that.
Well, I think...
But if you do the PDF, whether or not it's used on the website is a separate, because that's a different department, but if we do the PDF, I, I would like to poll the counselors, because I think, just setting up a new rule, which be Rule 5D or something, that the agendas would be printed, I'd like to find out our current council would feel about getting them electronically, only because, as you say, and I said, I'm going to print it out, the documents I want. I like the notion of a-fileability, and I like the notion of selectability, I can select what documents I need, but I'd still have to print it, so instead of her printing it, I'm printing it, but I also have it scanned and electronic and saved to my computer. I'd like to find out how the other, now, knowing our council, I don't think anybody has a problem, they have computers. So, what do you think, Joe? I mean, I, I don't want to just say, we can bring this up again in another meeting, once I hear from the counselors, and I, I'd like to do it at the meeting, I'm going to say, I'd like to ask every counselor how you would feel about this, because right now, I'm, I'm ready to do it, I like it, as long as all she's going to do, if the counselor says, can I also ask Barbara to print it out for me? I'd say, no, she's not going to do double work. Right? I mean, that's what I...
I always thought there would be a vote, but I would almost suggest we...
Well, we would vote on it after we heard, I think, or not.
No, I'd even say, tell them, this is what we're discussing, so give it some thought, I would even give them some thought to vote on it next meeting, because I don't think they should just, oh shit, I hadn't really thought about that.
Okay, okay, but I, this is the subject in front of us, and I like to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, and then say, next weekend, we're going to take a vote on it, just so...
Okay, that's a good idea, I mean...
I, going back to the rule, I don't think you need to change it, and I don't know if maybe it's not, because it says it shall be made available.
Shall be delivered to the city counselors, it doesn't have to say...
So that means, like, down the road...
You'll have the choice to...
If you wanted to go back, or, you know, if there was an instance where, I don't know, it, this doesn't nail you into one way or another, it can, you know, it, made available can be, it can be, you know, anyway.
Delivered to the city counselor, but if we say electronically, then a counselor can't force you to print it.
Well, yeah, but I, I think doing it that way, and maybe...
Documents shall be delivered to the city counselors, is all it says now.
And that's...
Delivered electronically would mean that the rule states that it's electronic, and Barbara isn't said, the counselor calls them up, hey, I want it all printed for me.
Any member of the public could walk in and say, I would like a copy.
Twenty cents a page.
And they have to pay 20 cents a page?
So, but I think, I think you can just leave that, there's no reason to, to change it, because it really can...
But you can't ask a counselor to pay 20 cents a page?
Well, no, not a counselor.
Well, what I'm trying to do is prevent you from doing double work.
Well, no, I think, but if, there's no reason to make that so, so, you know, specific.
Okay.
Just leave it.
I mean, I'm fine with it as it is.
It covers it either way.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to walk in and show anybody, like, how I make PDFs, how I make them, like, it's, it's...
I think...
When, double work makes it sound like it's kind of this Herculean fast.
No, it's just, there's...
Well, printing it and PDFing it?
It's a matter of the button on the left or the button on the right.
Seeing as a PDF from printed...
Okay, how many, I have four printed, I have five.
Yeah, I don't want to do, someone wants, you know, oh, Joe likes it printed, and Dan wants it, you know, it's like, no, it's like, it's either...
Well, there is a city council where that's done, like, most of them get electronic, like, one individual likes to pick up a paper copy.
Which, which may happen.
I mean, if Don Sekowski was here, we would have to...
We would have to provide it for him, because I don't think it's forced technology on people, right?
My question's, like, there's so many times when we have finance, ordinance, planning, documents that are this, like, you know, and during those subcommittee meetings, like we were doing last night with the...
That package from Dan Hagan was 25 pages.
And so, like, Jen, when do you, do you, when do you take, where do you take notes on something? Like, if there was a, something you were listening to, and someone brought something up that you, would you, do you open up a Word, and, or how do you take notes?
If it's a PDF, there's comments that you can make right into a PDF.
If you have the proper software. Adobe doesn't always give you, you have to have Adobe 13 to be able to edit a PDF.
I, personally, I use a lot of text edited documents, because they can be opened by anybody, and I...
There's different skill levels for everybody to use.
Yeah, and there's different prices for all of those add-ons, you know, you've got like a basic...
I think it's going to come down to...
I happen to have Word, I have to have Word that is on everything else.
Well, that's why, why text edited on everything else, in this. And it's free, and it has no formatting.
I like the notion, because I can read PDFs on my phone, I like that notion, but I think if we were to do this, I think people are, we're going to have to expect that some people will want, they're going to have to print it out, or they're going to want it printed, I don't know, I want to, as, what I would like to do is leave this, that we're considering this, because I think the notion of electronic delivery is good, but I want to see if it'll hand-decap people on the council, that's just where I am right now, I like it, what do you think?
So, I'm, why don't I just make a motion?
You want to vote on it?
The thing, I, I would suggest too, maybe, before we make a motion, is that maybe we do it for a year. First of all, we ask, we take a vote on it, but the motion will be for a year, not for a whole term, just a...
No, I was just going to make the motion that we first bring it to the city council for, for their input and a vote as to whether or not it's even worth following up on this. If, if they all have an interest, or if the majority have the interest of us to follow up on it, then...
Well, I don't think we need a vote, we're going to have to have another meeting. We could vote on it tonight, but I'm not sure I'm ready to say yes or no.
Oh, no, I don't want to vote on it tonight, I want to poll the city council.
Right, but I, I think I can just do that as cheer, I don't think we need to have a motion.
You just want to do that, you don't want...
But, but we should vote on it and deliver it, like, if we decide we want to do electronic, everybody's thinking about it, so in the next two meetings from now, we'll be able to vote on it. And what you're saying is put a time on it, that this, it has a sunset, it has a sunset language in it.
Yeah, just to say, how people, they may find it's better than they thought, they may find it's worse than they thought, that way they say, oh yeah, this is easy, eleven o'clock, oh.
Yeah, I, I think a trial period might be something to investigate, but I think we first need to poll the other counselors to see what their feelings are.
What I would say to the counselors is, we are considering this greatly, because it would be a PDF, you would be able to select what you want printed, you would print it at home if you want it printed, or you could bring a laptop to council and read them, whatever you want to do, but what we don't want is to have to have, I don't want to have to have Barbara print them and send them electronically, but if a counselor says, well, I just don't have a printer, or I don't feel it's right that I have to print every paper, they could vote no to it. I mean, we're not going to please everybody. I don't think this has to be an unanimous decision. But I think we are moving in an electronic way, and this is one small step. Eventually, everybody will have laptops at their, at their desk, I mean, I almost did that.
No, I'm, I'm bringing mine from now on, and it also helps, if the public wants it, they can just email Barbara and say, I'd like a copy of the package, and she can just email it to them.
Okay, let me poll the council, and we'll make another meeting, which I'd like to set tonight before we go to vote on this, okay? I'll tell the counselors, we're considering this, come to the meeting if you have an objection, send a note to you.
You know, another thing is that, I know that, I think that school, school committee does it that way, and Dan, Carrie might have some thoughts on how you like it.
Yeah, they do do it through you.
As I said, CPA, she sends me everything electronically, and I like that, I have to say, I like it, because now I have it.
Well, you're prepped before you walk in the meeting.
Well, that doesn't matter, I still be prepped by reading the document.
You should be prepped in, you just pick your stuff up.
That's not the point, the point is...
It's available a week before a meeting.
I can choose what I need to print, and we're saving paper.
I mean, I've never had a problem getting my stuff, it's available on Thursday, before the meeting, a week before, and if something comes in in between that, Barbara makes sure we get, get it, you know, so...
Now, what about, oh, I have another...
Five minutes before the meeting.
Yeah. What about, sometimes we get things last minute, and those all bring to the meeting, and...
That's, that's going to be brought on your table.
They're going to have to pay for them.
So then, what happens, I mean, how does that get, does it get kind of, like...
I don't think it's so hard to take one document and scan it and print it, I mean, that's going to happen on occasion.
I mean, would you want it scanned and a paper copy on your table?
Because if you're using your scanning filing system, and all of a sudden you get something in paper, then how do you put, if it's an important request, how do you put it into your folder?
Well, I could scan it, but I don't have a scanner.
I could scan it with my phone, and make it a PDF, and email it to you all.
I mean, if it came in late, and it's something that...
I have to say from...
I don't like it, but...
Because we get, we get things last minute.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with you printing it out if it's last minute out.
I mean, and I could scan it, but then it wouldn't be with the rest of the package.
Yeah, you print it out and give it to us.
They're going to have to print it, because we can't expect, people may not get, get it electronically in time, because it's the same day.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't happen that often, but I do, as you know, there are things that come in, just come in late.
I mean, I, I do sometimes make PDFs of documents at my phone while I'm meeting, you know, and then that gets shredded, and that gets filed.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Reconsideration, Rule 6F. This was taken, just so we understand, Roberts' Rules of Waters have reconsideration statements, but when you write rules for your council, they supersede Roberts' Rules, because they're the rules specific to you, Roberts' Rules is for everybody, you take and choose what Roberts' Rules you want. Although I don't think this is unclear, it, there is some, we had a recent decision that might have required reconsideration, and I wondered what would happen if we were doing, here's the deal, three counselors absent, and we know for a fact that they're in favor of something, so the vote is four to two, and motion's defeated, because there's only four votes in favor, and I say, I'd like to move, that, I'd like to announce that I'm going to reconsider this at the next meeting, because I know those counselors will be here, or hope that they'll be here. But that was a motion about a very important purchase, or something that was important to administration that is time-sensitive, so we have to put that on hold, and that's not in here. So that's one thing that I wondered about. Do we say the measures, the consequences of the measures vote must be put on hold until reconsideration is considered at the next meeting? Because one of the reasons to have it for the next meeting is, I don't want you to reconsider it now, because the people aren't here that I'm worried about.
I wish Counselor Kuzinski was here, because he was the one who did it, and you and he had a little bit of a back and forth, and that sounds very similar to the example that he...
That was a reconsideration.
The example that, that he used, and that's why we, it wasn't something we wanted to discuss at that training meeting, but we wanted to put it forward, because we were...
Because what, what happens if we reconsider to the measure that's for, but put forward?
Exactly.
And I thought of that, too.
I kind of feel like by the end of the conversation, even though it did come forward I kinda feel like by the end of the conversation, even though it did come forward and it go to you, that we had kinda walked all the way around it, but...
You have to have reconsideration for that very reason, because it should, you should be able to, when we, I was the one who pushed for this to be in when we first had the council.
Yep.
This is probably Agalons rules. Those Agalons rules, we took them and we rewrote them. I remember that. So, I felt reconsideration was necessary because of situations like that.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing should die in the water, just because...
But it means that the measure, I think what language I might wanna add to this, is the measure before us, if a council decides to ask for reconsideration, it puts on hold
The debate and the discussions of the next meeting?
It puts on hold the consequence of the vote. So if we voted, if we voted yes to something, and the people who were opposed to it said, like, "I have two councilors that I know are opposed to this," I mean, but that doesn't make sense. Maybe they feel, feel they could, they could get the other councilors to change their mind, 'cause someone was saying, ah, back and forth, I don't know.
Well, you know, you, you know...
But if you did that, there was a vote yes to buy a truck. Yeah, buy the truck. So that goes back to when the charter, in the charter right now, you can block a vote if you have a second. It used to have it so that I could just say, "I don't want the vote to happen."
Yep.
That's how it used to be.
Yep.
Reconsideration by an individual counselor stops the vote from consequence from taking place.
Actually, I think that was, was that, what, was that?
We changed that in the charter.
Yes, we did.
I know, I pushed for that, because I don't think...
Okay, so maybe I don't have a...
And that's what I mean, this is...
It's charter to eat, you know...
This is really similar to the conversation that we had, and, and like I said, I feel like at the end of it, we kinda walked all the way around, and we were, like, running through a couple of scenarios, exactly the way you are. Actually, I think it, it might actually be okay the way that it stands.
It's, it's okay the way that it stands, but what I alw... We haven't used it much, maybe once. We almost used it recently, 'cause there was a lot of absences, and Dan Hagan knew that I was considering reconsideration, and he decided to vote in the affirmative. I forget what the measure was.
Yeah, no, it was, it was on, um...
Liquor licenses, wasn't it?
The liquor license.
Liquor license, 'cause he wasn't sure about how many liquor licenses we should have.
Right, Nathan wasn't there, and they were both for it, and...
And Nathan, and Salem, or somebody wasn't there, and we knew they were...
Yeah, we have abstentions, too.
Yeah.
And we had abstentions, so the vote wasn't gonna pass. It was, it was gonna go five to zero to two, or something, because there's a lot of abstentions and people absent, and I was worried it was gonna go down, and I, I for one wanted it to reconsider when more, everybody was here. But that's in the negative. If it's in the negative, you're not, you're not stopping a, an action from happening. If the administration came forward with something that, um, and we had a positive vote, and those against it wanted it reconsidered, then that action has to stop. And that's obvious to me, but does it need to be written? You know what I'm saying, Joe?
Is the person...
So if there's something positive, and the people against the measure, whatever it is, want it reconsidered, then the positive vote can't stand.
I wouldn't think so.
But that's like one counselor being able to stop something.
Is there anything in there that says who has the right, I mean, no, town meeting time, and...
Any counselor.
Because sometimes it's, you have to have voted one, I can't remember, one way or the other. You have to be...
It actually says, a vote reconsider shall open debate. A motion to reconsider requires a majority vote. Reconsidered may be moved by any counselor regardless of how the counselor voted on the first vote.
Right.
So if I voted no...
That is the case sometimes.
Well, I think that was important, too, because councilors may feel, hey, you know, there's a lot of debate on this, I'd like it to be reconsidered, because I wasn't sure.
Well, now, in Hagan's case, he said, he was still up on the fence on it, but he knew that his no vote was gonna kill it.
And he didn't wanna kill it.
Unless you brought it up for reconsideration. He didn't wanna kill it. He said that.
Mm-hmm.
"I don't wanna kill it, so for the sake of that, I'm gonna vote yes, just so that we can move it on."
Because he knew that there were councilors who were in favor of it that weren't there.
Right, right, and he also knew that it was gonna, you were gonna put the reconsideration rule into effect.
And, and I, I think the way it's written gives, gives a counselor options, but one counselor can prevent something from happening by stating that, but that's, but then there's history. Twenty-one years, it's never happened.
No, we've had the block.
The block was charter-based, and then I just put in, you have to have two people.
Yeah.
So if one guy has, Wes Levalle's little block, we had to have a special meeting, you weren't here when that happened. We have a meeting before Christmas, before the new term ended, so we could get something passed, because Wes blocked it. We have to have a special meeting, 'cause it's, charter says the next meeting, or special meeting.
Yeah, and we're gonna introduce city councilors, and...
And I don't like the, when the senate can stop the, well, single senator can stop nomination, and it bothers me that, you know, you're acting for the whole council.
It's a good thing to add the second.
I think the second, but in this case, but on the other hand, I'm not so worried. It's not happened. We've had a lot of different personalities on the council.
I mean, it could happen, but it's there for a reason.
Well, we, we need it there.
We have to have it there.
Generally, it's when it's in the negative. If we voted down something, like if we voted against the liquor license, well, nothing, we're, we're not preventing something from hap... We're preventing something from happening, but it's not gonna stop the administration from buying a truck or something. In this case, we bring it back to try and get it passed.
And it's also a motion to reconsider.
It's when we all voted in favor of something, like we voted in favor for liquor license, somebody wanted to stop it. Everybody's moving forward with liquor licenses and everything, everybody's excited about getting a new liquor license, and suddenly it's gonna go backwards. Well, it's there, we could do that, but it's never happened.
And the vote, the vote for reconsideration still requires a majority vote.
A majority vote.
That has to happen first, and then you revote the measure. If we voted yes, then you re-debate the motion that was before us. So you have to do that.
The thing I was wondering, maybe since we're looking at it, you think it's, maybe we should just check and change it to the next meeting? If there was something that was really important, I know we were concerned about possible budget maneuverings, and we were gonna call a special meeting if it needed.
All right.
Do you think maybe, um, that flexibility should be there, so that if next meeting...
The word regular or special, that's what you wanna add there.
Or just to add the flexibility, 'cause if there is something time-sensitive, that the next regular meeting is too late.
Well, regular or special meeting, and the reason for that is, I think that's important. I need everybody to remember, a majority vote suspends the rules. So, I'd like a motion to suspend Rule 6F for now, and allow it to be a special meeting. We all vote in favor? Okay. 'Cause these are council rules, they're not the charter in which you have to go to the state and everything. This is council rules. The council rules can be amended or suspended whenever you vote on them. So we can vote to suspend a rule at that case, but I think that's a good, that's a good addition, regular or special meeting. But you, you being here the last time this was discussed, I think we're okay with this?
Yeah, I, I kinda remember at the end of it, we had this kind of conversation, and then by the end of it, we had kinda walked all the way around it, went, you know what? I think it's, but we also, we, we talked about you a lot, and we were like, we'd be curious to see what Dan thinks.
No, I wanted to debate it, because I was worried about the, what are the consequences of reconsideration? Would you stop an action that, if I had a positive and I wanted the liquor licenses to pass, and this person said no, but that's not so serious. It's not so serious if we were waiting to buy a truck, or you wait two more weeks. I mean, it's not so serious like that, so I'm not, and, and the bottom line is, it's never happened. Twenty-one years.
True. It's just, it just happened to be because we were, we were reading the charter. Yeah.
So I think it's okay the way it's written now, except for adding the word special after regular or special meeting. Maybe that would be the amendment. What do you guys think? Joe?
I would, I would think so, just, just in case, just in case.
Adding it where?
I can't make that motion. I could have that on there.
Oh, no, I'll make a motion. But...
Where are you going to add that? Shall be open for debate.
Take place at the next regular or special meeting of the council. Is there a Z in it? Regular or special, right here. Okay? So I'll make a motion that we amend 6F by the addition of "or special" between regular and meeting.
Second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I will rewrite, but can you rewrite that? Do you need me to do?
No.
It's pretty easy, right? Um, the last thing, I think is a, is an interesting one, it's the one, I'm, interesting, it's good. Getting committees to have more definition in the rules. I know we did it for the role of the Rules of Government Relations Committee, 'cause way back, we needed to make sure, what were we gonna do, 'cause it was government relations? So we, we did a pretty extensive listing of what the committee would do. I think that's a great example of what all the other committees should... We have the role of the Public Safety Committee, but there's not a lot written there. So we just asked the committee chairs to come up with something?
We do have something for property, too.
Is it in here?
It's not in there, though. It was when property was established, 'cause that was a, a later committee.
Alan's...
Is that, is that in the, do you have that record of that?
I have a record of it. Alan's...
That'd be something they could give us.
I, I gave that to, I gave it to Sam.
I remember that.
So I think all we need to do as a rules committee is recommend, is ask...
Joy and I are working on it for appointments.
I think ask every committee chair to, every committee to submit new role for each committee, and I'll tell them to use 11E.
That's what we, we call a mission statement, or what, what, how should you...
I like the role.
The role.
The role of, the role of, that's our, it's the role of your committee. And this one has, like, you could do bullet points or lit listings, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's a statement of purpose.
Whatever works, whatever works.